Great, could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Excellent.
I'm excited. I'm going to turn it over to you to do the introduction, Dr. Harrison.
Great, great. Good evening, everyone. Colleagues, thank you. This spring, we were pleased to launch our first ever school climate survey. This initiative was motivated by multiple goals, but most importantly, we are seeking to increase community engagement and feedback, which is essential in developing strong partnerships and informing our planning. The survey, which was administered in April, was completed by approximately 1,800 parents, community members, staff members, middle school and high school students. The feedback will serve as yet another data set that the district will reflect upon as we look towards our future. As educators, data is becoming very important in our professional eyes, as it is in many other areas of both professions. As this was our first survey, there's much to be learned from this feedback and, of course, our process in administering the survey. The information we received tonight is going to be processed at all different levels of the school district, leading from each and every school level, individual departments, and of course, at the district and board levels. To help inform our work, the administration is also going to engage in training with our partners in this work, K-12 Insight, to process key and important takeaways and make necessary connections with our ongoing work across the district. As we hear this presentation tonight, there will be items that will certainly be affirming of the great work that our staff leads on a daily basis and the wonderful experiences that our students enjoy. There will also be some data points that will lead to further dialogue and possibly more investigation determined what they mean for us, to our district, and of course, most importantly, what they mean to our students. We have to consider that this feedback represents the perceptions of survey participants at one moment in time, though. It will serve as a baseline for future surveys from which we will be able to gain further insight and measure our growth. Also, we have to be mindful that occurrences in our environment also impacts results. So we need to be aware of how different timing can provide for varying perceptions. To me, this means looking at this data longitudinally through periods of time, years over years, with similar surveys, as it'll be critical to measuring what all this means and ultimately how we're doing across the school district. With that said, I think we have a real interesting presentation before us tonight and one that's going to lead to some reflection and will help inform our thinking in the future. So I'm pleased to introduce our partners from K-12 Insight. We have Dr. David Blakelock, who is going to be leading our presentation, and his colleague, Ms. Celia Anderson, who's our account manager.
Thank you for coming.
So, Dr. Blakelock, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. And as luck would have it, that was the moment that my computer decided to install updates. So we will work through this. I want to thank you for having me here this evening, inviting us up to present these data to you. I want to kind of touch on a couple of things before we actually get into the data presentation itself. Idea number one is to kind of dovetail on something that Dr. Harrison just said, in the sense that these are perceptual data. These are what people are thinking. That the contrast to that is observable data of things that are happening. So when we look at the perceptual data, that's the idea that people are thinking these things about them. And so it becomes, how can we change people's perceptions? Or are these things actually happening? So it's, as Michael Hannah said, Mr. Hannah said, "This is a good conversation starter." A few moments, he said this to me. And so it is just that. It identifies areas to kind of dig into a little bit more, to identify if it is an actual problem or a perceptual problem, and then coming up with strategies to identify that as well. So we administered the survey to parents and community members, staff members, and students. And we did that using three separate surveys. And so, technology is fun tonight. And so I will just wander over here for just a second and change slides. It's frozen. Okay. So, we administered it to parents and community members, students, and staff members. We did the parents and communities members in one survey, we did the students in another survey, and we did the staff members in a third survey. When we do this work across the country, and K-12 Insight partners with that 200 school districts across the country in doing this sort of work, what we tend to see is a phenomenon where parents or staff members rate things the highest, followed by parents, followed by students. It's kind of the surly adolescent phenomenon you see where they kind of come in a lot lower. We see a little bit of a different trend here in Irvington, which I'll speak to in just a moment. I think we're good now. Okay. So, we did a climate survey with the school. And so when we think about these particular data, the individual unit of analysis for most of these questions is going to be the school. So the real value in gold in a lot of these questions is looking at it at the school level, because the question is specifically about the school. What this report is, is an aggregation of those data up into the district level. We have here on the screen the specific kind of broad topics that we work at, and everything from academic support down to communication is a school level, Board of Education down to strategic objectives is district level. But again, we will look at those data, the district will look at those data at the school level as well to kind of see it, but we're going to talk about the aggregation tonight. When we talk about students, we actually gave the survey to students in grades six through 12. And so, thank you. Just about. And so when we look at the response rate, or the details, we had it open from April 9th through the 29th. Dr. Harrison put out a lot of different reminders. We actually put it out as public URLs for people to go out and be able to take it. We did a quality check to make sure there wasn't too many people stuffing the ballot box on the backside of it, to make sure that data was nice and clean and consistent. Couple of points on this slide is that because we do this as a census sample as opposed to a random sample, the results are only generalizable to those who actually took the survey itself. So it gives you that good pocket. But when we look at the actual response rates themselves, we have a good representation of parents, staff members, students, and community members. One thing I want to note is that asterisk there next to the 771 parents who took the survey, parents who took the survey for one school, had children in another school, had the opportunity to answer the school level questions again at the end of the survey, so that they were able to answer if they had a child in Main Street School and the middle school, they were able to take the survey for both schools. We defined community members for the survey as anyone who did not check parent or guardian of a current Irvington student there at the top. And that's how we came up with those 144. That was to kind of capture those that kind of served as community members, particularly for the district level questions. If you took the survey as a community member, you did not see the school level questions. And the reason for that is because a lot of the content within the school level questions, if you didn't have a child in that school, was not going to be relevant to you. And so to keep the data as tight as we could, we wanted to make sure people who actually had the experience within the school. So I know that's a lot of setup for the big reveal, so thank you for bearing with me on that. So the survey opens with one question. And the question is, "How would you rate the overall quality of this school?" And this is the breakdown comparison across the parents, staff members, and students. And one of the phenomena I talked about at the beginning of the presentation is that we typically see staff members rating things higher than parents, because they're talking about their school. And that leads into some of the things that Dr. Harrison was talking about at the beginning of the presentation, where there were some contextual matters. In this case, we had the survey open while you were going through collective bargaining, which I think had an impact on the staff responses overall. So it gives you that kind of baseline, that event, some situational bias to kind of think about as you kind of analyze these results and think about them. But when we look at the student data compared to the other two, they are lower. It kind of follows the same pattern that we just talked about. The next slide is the academic support dimension. And when we look at this, what we want to do is look at the comparison, and this is the percentage of combined strongly agree or agree responses. I want you to focus on this presentation right now, but within your packet, you actually have the data with the full distribution. Because one of the things that could potentially impact these particular data is the don't-know option. You'll see the options below, the don't-know can have an impact, and I'm actually going to point out a few places in the presentation where it does. The pieces that I want to kind of point out on this particular slide is the gap between the staff member perception and the student perception on questions such as, "Students receive timely feedback about their work," and "Students receive helpful feedback about their work." That is the sort of thing that you can share with the teaching staff to say, "Maybe you can think about other ways that we can provide different types of feedback that'll be more beneficial to students to kind of increase that perception." That is something that we see with the survey nationally as a challenge, as the students not feeling that the feedback they get is as timely as they expect or as helpful as they expect. The other piece that we see very much nationally is going to be the third from the bottom there. The contrast between staff member perception and student perception on students are shown how lessons relate to life outside of school. Every district I have run this survey with has had a challenge with that particular item. It actually speaks to the challenge of curriculum relevance. Having done focus groups in this area in districts across the country, the challenge is, is that what a 25 to 45-year-old teacher thinks is going to be relevant to an adolescent may not actually be relevant to an adolescent. So getting a sense from the kids about what they think they can need to know to kind of connect with their learning in school to the outside world. It's the age-old, "Why am I learning this question?" So kind of being able to kind of work with them on that. When we move to the student support dimension, these data, as you can see, are fairly favorable. You see a nice straight line with the different pieces of it. You'll still see that gap between student and staff member, and parent and staff member for that matter, particularly on that second one down where about the counselor being available for students to go through for a personal problem. This is another thing that we're starting to see a more national trend in right now. I gave a board presentation in this state last week. They had the same exact challenge, where everyone thinks they can go to their staff member with a school problem, but whether or not their staff member is available for them for a personal problem. And that gets into kind of some of the social emotional needs of the students that are starting to emerge and people are starting to think about right now. So we're kind of taking a look at that to see if there's anything that can be done to improve it in any way. You'll see specifically the support about addressing social emotional needs. That gap between student and staff member right there at the bottom, that just, you know, it substantiates what I just talked about with that. When we get into school leadership, this is where we do see the don't-knows really dragging down the results for the students, particularly for the bottom three items. I think each of those has 20 to 25 percent don't-know responses, so it does bring it down, because it's a combined percentage of agree or strongly agree. So it is something to think about in terms of looking at these from the perspective of the full distribution. We do see less of a don't-know phenomenon impacting the ones on the first two there. And so it's one thing to kind of maybe look into, starting a dialogue between students and principals about the types of decisions that principals are making, to kind of make sure that they're having that student input going into it to help inform that decision-making and kind of raise the perception of students in that regard. When we look at family involvement, this is also another one that's very interesting in the sense that we see students rating their family involvement lower than parents rating their family involvement. So when we look at this right here, you see, again, the staff in some cases having a higher perception of how involved parents are, but students having that lower one. The one I would really look at is going to be that bottom one right there, where you see that 54 percent. That is another one where I believe the don't-knows are influencing it. So in a solution orientation, that becomes a communications issue. You know, the fact that we collected this input, and here is how we used it, and here are the things that we've done to put that information out there, to kind of build that bridge between community, families, and school, to let them know that their feedback is meaningful and what you are going to do with the feedback that you receive. When we get to safety and behavior, I will tell you, historically, what we have seen here is the bottom couple of them, particularly around bullying, staff and students treating each other with respect, staff members being responsible and students reporting bullying, as being the really big concerns that we see. However, what we are seeing now is a lot more issues around the top three, particularly this year. And that is going to be the bias, I believe, of the recent events, particularly in Parkland, which is around the time that this, you know, right before this, or a couple, a month or two before this school was open. When we look at the top two there, from a parent perspective, about all school staff members are aware of the safety and security procedures, that has a high percentage of don't-know, which still tells you something and probably has a very strong impact on the perception that this school is safe. So it's a matter of sharing with your parents what you are doing to prepare your staff members for emergency situations, not necessarily telling them exactly what you do, but talk about how you're preparing them, how you're drilling, those sorts of things, to help parents understand that you are preparing the staff members and the students for how to act and how to behave within an emergency situation. After that, we take a look at this, and we see the parent perspective of the Board of Education. These data very much speak for themselves. When we look at the two, the bottom two right there with that don't-know, again, it gets into a marketing connection to the community perspective on that. So it's data to kind of work with there, to kind of think about how you can help inform the community about these sorts of things. Same thing with community members, kind of a consistent data set there, where we kind of look at the different levels of don't-know. Roughly one in three don't-know out of the 144 or so community members who took the survey. When we look at the staff members, you see a little bit more disagreement. I would take this in the context of the collective bargaining concept that was going on at the same time, but it is something to certainly think about as to how you can improve the perceptions here. And then the students. A lot of the students don't-know, and it is an opportunity to kind of start talking about civic responsibility, civic duty, and connection to all the different entities and organizations of local government, school board being one of them. And so using that as a way to help them understand how the school board operates, where the connection is, and that helps them be involved in decision-making as well and feel connected to the district, too. When we look at the parent perception of district leadership, again, you see a lot of don't-know, so it gets into that communications aspect of things. And when we look at these with a high don't-know, the way to think about them is kind of the divergence between the combined strongly agree and/or agree, and the combined disagree or strongly disagree. So when you see the second one down there, you still have 61 percent of your parents actively agreeing this compared to roughly nine or 10 percent who are actively disagreeing. So you're still very favorable there, but it does talk to you about that marketing piece, that communications piece, about what's going on. You see a bigger divergence there with the district leadership team from the community members. Again, a smaller end count there, but you still see it's more of a 50, it's closer to a 50/50 split, and the divergence between agreement and disagreement with a strong don't-know. So in this case, we want to think about those don't-knows as our swing votes. Those are the people we can inform and bring over to that agreement level. For staff members, communication is very strong there at the top with the 31 percent disagreement. And so you start to hear that theme about how information is out there. Many districts struggle with how to do this properly. They put out information in many ways, short of grabbing people by the collar and shouting at them sometimes. It is very hard to get them to kind of actually receive the information that it is, because there is so much going on. So it is, I would say, a national problem as far as being able to effectively communicate, particularly from a district perspective, because what most parents can connect with is the school. And so the district is another entity altogether, and so that's something they don't have to really think about, that are really focused on their connection to the school where their child attends, and they know, you know, the teacher and the principal and everyone there. For the students, as we can expect, there's a high percentage of don't-know, same thing, not a lot of interaction with district leadership. But again, an opportunity for swing votes with those as well, creating that connection to the public entity. And so we kind of see a divergence here as far as the effective communication, and I will correct those values there, but you can kind of see the split in the chart here, where parents do feel that the school cannot communicates effectively, more parents, staff members, than not, feel that the school communicates effectively, and even the students, more than not, feel that the school communicates effectively. When we get into the capital projects, based on what capital projects you were going to look into doing, across all four populations, safety and security was the top thing. Again, the context of the local bias. So we see that from parents. We see that from community members. We see that from staff members. And we see that from students. And so how we calculate that weighted score is basically every rank one gets a five, every rank two gets a four, every rank three gets a three, and on down the line, and then we just add them all up. Most points wins. When we look at the strategic objectives, for three of the four populations, the one that is at the top here, "Providing students with a rigorous, comprehensive, enriched, and diversified curricula, expanding STEM education, and integrating technology," is number one. The one group that diverges from that is the staff members, who ranked it as number two, and they rank the one below it as number one, the fostering, the social emotional So you see the community members put the rigorous, comprehensive curricula up there, and the staff members flip those first two. And then we get into some of the verbatim responses. So let me say a few words about open-ended questions and surveys and open-ended responses, and how we analyze them. For several of the open-ended responses, really the school was the unit of analysis. And so to do any kind of thematic analysis across the district is not methodologically sound from the perspective is that the schools where you have the most students are going to swing the data towards phenomenon that going on at the school, and they're not generalizable across the district. So what we are doing is we are working right now on removing, identifying information from those verbatims to protect the confidentiality of those who took the survey, and then we will provide that information back to look at at the school level. When we get to the open-ended question here, "Do you have any specific recommendations for improving the quality of the educational experience at Irvington?" You will see this was late in the survey, so we start to see some fatigue. We had roughly 770 parents take the survey. Only 283 answered that question. So within that 283, we look at the concepts that hold together the most, have the most critical mass, as standing out as being repeated. And those are the ideas and concepts on these slide, and these are things to kind of look at. They're perceptual things to consider. They do not mean that they are a reality. Is the difference between qualitative and quantitative research? Is that with qualitative research, it is a lot less bound by the numerical concepts that quantitative is, and is more so exploratory in the sense of, it's not confirmatory, it is exploratory. So it is the start of the conversation, it's the depth, as opposed to the breadth. And so having that depth to work at, these are the concepts that you may want to start looking at. In a potential way to go with this sort of question and these sorts of responses is to actually use them to inform additional questions in a future survey, to really see how broad-based these are, to kind of see if it's just a small group of people, or if really everyone in the district feels this way. And so we have the same ones from the students, the Wi-Fi being one of the things that they And the last slide speaks to the key insights of the survey. A lot of these points I've kind of touched about already. The first point talks about just the high percentage of parents, staff members, and students who rated their school as excellent or good. 93 percent of the parents who took the survey rated the school as excellent or good. That's pretty high. It's probably one of the highest I've seen, and so that is something to definitely be proud of. The second point speaks to the divergence on the timely feedback between students and staff members. So it is a matter of, again, conversation starter. Let's start talking about how long it's taking staff members to get work back to students to see if it is really taking that long. The third one down there speaks to that curriculum relevance piece I spoke to about lessons relating to life outside of school. So thinking about ways to potentially bring in the outside world a little bit more, problem-solving, real-life application, career exploration, those sorts of things, are things that districts that we've been working with have been trying, that have been somewhat successful. 50 percent agree or strongly agree that school administrators make decisions that are in the best interest of the students, and that school administrators make themselves available when they have a concern. So that's something to look at as far as, you know, is the principal really accessible to students? Should the principal really be accessible to students? Having those sorts of conversations about ways to think about the accessibility between student and principal to allow them to be able to influence those decisions, maybe through student government or something along those lines, or to kind of have conversations with the principals about accessibility. I talked about the don't-know aspect of it with the parent, oh, sorry, with the safety and security procedures. 40 percent of parents indicated they don't know if staff members are aware. So again, it gets in that communications piece, same thing, 31 percent indicated they don't know if students are aware of safety and security procedures. Again, this is biased from the Parkland event that is now really top of mind for a lot of people. It's a national conversation we're having right now. To kind of dovetail onto that, when we look at the capital project, everyone picked the safety and security as their first choice. And then the kind of the last point right there speaks to the strategic objectives, where everyone kind of picked the first one except for the staff members, who picked it second. So that is the abbreviated version of the presentation. Like I said, within your board packet, you have it with the full distributions for each population as well, but just for the sake of time and how much data anyone can consume in a single presentation, we kind of cut it down a little bit here. But I am now willing to open the floor for any questions.
Well, thank you very much. As I said, when I first came in and greeted you, it's been very informative to read this, and thank you for the presentation. I would be happy to open it up to some questions from trustees, if anyone wants to jump in first. Brian?
Sure. I guess one of the questions I had was, based on what you would have expected to see, or based on what you see in other districts across the country, are there particular areas where we had a divergence one way or another?
So that's a great question. So I'm going to answer that question in two, with two answers. Answer number one is that we do have a nationally benchmarked survey that we put out there. It's one of our catalog surveys, and we have it validated, reliable, all those sorts of things. This survey here is based on that survey, but it diverges from it quite a bit. So what I will say is, when we look at the comparison of these data compared to the data that we see with the national norms that we've created, for the parent data for all three groups, that overall school quality is above the benchmark. So the overall perception of the quality of the schools is above the benchmark. When we get into the nitty-gritty of the specific questions, for the most part, a lot of the parent pieces are above the benchmark. When we get into the student and staff member pieces, we see some divergence of being below that benchmark there. The biggest piece that you see it below the benchmark, and again, this context is going to be important, is the staff perception of emergency preparedness, those two emergency preparedness questions. And again, we collected this benchmark data outside of the time that the Parkland incident happened. So in some ways, and I can send a report to the district to kind of show those exact comparisons, but it's above and below in a lot of different areas. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And to follow up on Brian's question, you touched upon part of what I was going to ask you, is that you, it's indicated that you administered such a survey in 200 other school districts. Are you saying that...
So not this exact survey, the 200?
That's my question. So you're saying that, so our survey is not typical of the ones that you administered? Or can you just explain upon that a little bit?
Certainly. So we have what we refer to as a school quality survey, and we've administered, we have, within our benchmark norm, we have about 10 different districts that are in part of that benchmark norm. So those are kind of where we bring the norm. They're across the country, varying sizes. We actually do some mathematical operations to make sure that the weighted values are equalized, so that the, you know, the big districts aren't diluting the small district data. And so when you actually see that report, it won't be as percentages, it will be as weighted scores. So we, the survey that we administered here, some of the language was tweaked, some questions were removed, some questions were added. Where I see, where I looked at a kind of apples-to-apples comparison on a question... Where I see, where I looked at a kind of apples-to-apples comparison on a question, even though the language is tweaked, if the, didn't seem to be, what's known as a substantive change to the content of the question, I've got the comparison there. But there are some items that we don't have the benchmark data on because they are items that we added to the survey as part of the development process.
I would add, in terms of both when we were looking, well, we had a, you know, the committee of stakeholders, included students and staff and board members. We started, and parents, yeah, and parents, and we started from a place where we were interested in saying, well, could we use that benchmark survey? But the reality is that obviously we are a particular type of district in terms of our size and the type of district we are. So as we looked at that, we started to move away from that. And really, I think the discussion was, we're interested, if we continue to do surveys, this first one is potentially a baseline that we can build off of and reference, you know, over time, the changes. But we weren't sure that it would be as important to compare ourselves to this sort of general, not-so-clear group of schools that weren't necessarily like ours.
Okay. And that kind of takes me to the next question, which is-
Can I, can I just add a little bit to what you're saying? Is the sense that, you know, to create a survey that's going to make sense for your district is what really the goal of the project was? The other side of it is that, to follow up on, just to kind of reiterate something Michael just said, is that the benchmark concept, that context matters when you're kind of doing it in a vacuum. So this is your first year running through it. When you're doing this again next year, you're going to want to just see how you compare to yourselves as opposed to what you are to the national norms.
Okay. So in your opinion, what is the, what was the objective of the survey? Because is it to find out how the three different groups, parents, staff, and students perceive and respond to a set of questions? So we're really, we're looking at, just looking at perceptions between the students, staff, and parents, and seeing where they align and where they don't? Or is the objective to get a baseline in there to identify certain areas that now we take it, look at the baseline, and now we're going to zero in on different areas that came through the survey? What's the main objective in your purpose, having now administered it?
So in my, in response to that, I would say with the day that you have, both of those. Because when you talk about that gap analysis that you kind of brought up in your first point, that really helps flush out some very specific pieces. But there may be some other pieces where you're not necessarily as concerned about the divergence, where you are seeing a high percentage of disagreement across even all three populations, and those are trigger points that you probably want to take a look at as well. So I think the gap analysis just kind of helps exacerbate and bring forth specific issues, but within each population as well, you want to make sure that you're paying attention to the responses to each item, because those may be indicative of issues that you may have as well.
And my last question, and I'll turn it over to the rest, is now that we've done the first survey, it sounds like is what you're saying, there's others that we should be considering administering. What's the time period in which, in light of either past events that have happened in the country, or in light of just standard operating practice, when do you expect the next survey to ideally be administered, so we can have a perspective?
So to kind of, I think maybe I have miscommunicated something in the sense that in this context, I'm not recommending another different type of survey. I would say when you're doing this survey again-
Yes.
-next year. My recommendation for a timeline perspective would be to do it roughly around the same time, but I would actually back it up and maybe do it a little bit earlier in the school year perhaps, so that it's closing before spring break.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, just going back to expected, unexpected results, I know we had a high amount of don't-knows in certain areas. Is that typical or not typical for those types of questions?
It's a great question. So when we look at specifically the student questions around principal being available, approachable, responsive when they have a concern, we do see typically a high percentage of don't-knows to those questions. Because students who may not have a concern may not know the answer to that question, they may not be talking to other students about the conversations that they're having with a principal, and so we do see a higher percentage of don't-know. Where we see the other percentage of don't-knows, high percentages of don't-knows, were around parent perceptions of those safety and security protocols, and that is something that we are seeing more and more of, particularly this year with the survey, and again, in real-life revision of events. It is much more top of mind for people than thinking of it in terms of a fire drill, or if you grew up in the Midwest like I did, a tornado drill. So in that regard, we see a high percentage of don't-know there. The third place in the survey where we saw a high percentage of don't-know responses was going to be on the Board of Education and District Leadership slides. Those questions were unique to Irvington. However, having asked similar questions in other districts, you do typically see a high percentage of don't-know, but just because people don't know does not mean that that is not good information, because it shows what your impact and district leadership's impact is, and where you may want to try to pivot a little bit to try to get the word out there, to make more people informed about the actions of the district.
So would it be fair to say that the don't-knows in the main areas were expected, but how we then want to deal with that information is what we need to discuss further?
Exactly. So it's a matter of coming up with an action plan of how to better inform people about these different concepts with the don't-knows.
Thank you.
The only other question I had is, you also touched on earlier, you said that when you look at the data, the real value is by school. So what, how does that typically work? Now we've looked at it by district, what is, what is the recommendation you make to the board as to then take it down to the next level and-
So my recommendation is typically starting it rather than top-down, coming bottom-up. And so rather than the board looking at the school information school by school first, giving those data to the principals, and having the principals review and digest those data, and be able to provide that additional context of things that they may be seeing, or being able to kind of make that differentiation between observable and perceptual on those things, and then perhaps come up with some type of action planning about what they're going to plan to do about it, and then to try to bring that information to the board. I want to bring Dr. Harrison into the conversation on that as well.
Yeah. No, so I think that's where a lot of the important work does occur, and one of the initiatives that I referenced in the beginning is that we've actually budgeted funds to work with K-12, where they're going to actually come in and facilitate a workshop with the administrative team, working specifically with our data, and then help us interpret and process. And when we're sitting there and trying to contextualize, when we're thinking about the observational piece of it that Dave referenced, he's going to help us connect from, from an action standpoint, and help us understand the story that the data is telling him as an expert. So, you know, it's one of those pieces that we, we're going to begin to learn and grow with the data, knowing that it's our first survey, so does this mean it's good or it's bad? And if it's an area where we're looking at real divergence in responses, or large don't-knows, or larger, smaller portions of perceptions that we're strongly agree or agree, well, what does that mean to us? And, you know, like we said, in some cases, it's communication. So it may not be the issue itself, it's trying to understand, well, how are we communicating and around this? So if we want to focus specifically on one example around security and parent awareness and staff awareness, we can simply say, sure, there's, you know, Parkland, and to use Dave's terminology, is the top of everyone's mind right now, or top of your head. We can use that to, as a part of the context. But as we're going through our bond development process for our capital project, and we're working with our new security partner, you know, you think about like the alignment of this work with that work, well, the conversations that we're having there are strategies in and around communication, different types of training that we're going to be providing moving forward. So there's real opportunity to close gaps, both practically in our practice, and looking at, one, yes, we're going to be providing more training, the different types of training for our staff members, but two, we can close the window on that don't-know category because we're discussing strategies for communication to the broader school community and internally within the community. So, you know, I think there's that opportunity for us to look at, you know, it in a variety of different ways. So there's, and I use that as an example because it's right at the front of my mind because we were just having these conversations in the other committee meeting just last week. But when we look at the other areas, we're going to have a similar level of dialogue, and it's going to be breaking it down into what we're seeing in individual schools, understanding the school-specific data, and trying to figure out, well, what does it mean to practice? And how can we move that needle in looking at not just future surveys, but making the experience different within, within the schools, within the community, depending on the individual data point?
Yeah, and to follow up on that for just one second, just to kind of get a little more meaning behind the workshop that was referenced, is that it is, we refer to it as the making feedback matter, and we basically have the principals sitting with their own data and help them understand what the numbers on the page really mean. We use that, and then we go into some root cause analysis to get them thinking about what might be the issues there, and then we actually have them setting SMART goals and an evaluation procedure for those goals. So we walk out of there with a clear action plan for principals to have to integrate what they think as the data pain points are within their school.
Just in terms of process, are those individualized meetings with each school leadership team, or is it one meeting with everyone that you guys facilitate?
So it's a good question, and depends on really district size. In a district like this, it will be one meeting where everyone's sitting with their own data, and it's a collective conversation. Because what, rather than having four different principals coming up with four different action plans around one concept, now we can kind of network a little bit and see what other people are doing, and identify some best practices, and have some discussion that may be cross-school if that's necessary as well. So in this case, it is everyone in a room at once, but I, we do give them a lot of individualized attention, and it is a kind of a coached process as we share information out and have discussion about the action plans and the root causes themselves.
And I kind of want to maybe step in with a crosswalk too, is that we step back, and there's a piece, as the reference of Michael said before, that we're looking at this with baseline too. So we're not jumping in and saying, you know, a survey that was administered within these two weeks is defining every aspect of this particular topic. So there's going to be, and it's not practical to think that from a school perspective with so many other initiatives and responsibilities, that you're going to be able, that we're going to be jumping in and based upon a single survey, looking to say, we're going to be creating action plans and action steps for everything. But it's a, the thing to step back and have takeaways, and being a small district, there's going to be pieces that are going to be initiatives that are going to go out of this that are district-wide, that are going to touch schools, there may be things that come up that are going to be work in individual schools. So I think it's, it's one piece of our work. It's not that all of a sudden we're going to be reactive to one particular survey. And I say that wanting to value the investment that we made in the survey, value the process that we had with the survey, and truly respect the feedback from our community that is informing this. But I, there's a piece I want to be cautious and say that we don't overreact to it, but we sit there and we process it, we think about it, we identify how it fits into the context of what has happened in Irvington, identify some goals that come out of this. But it's not practical to think that we're going to jump through, and every area where we have some question, or where we want to immediately do better, it means that there's going to be, you know, some significant strategic plan generated around it. But it's process, and this begins a feedback loop. And so when we speak to one of the questions in the survey, talking about how feedback is, I forget the exact terminology, about how feedback is valued and implemented, or whatever the case may be, this is that opportunity to, big picture, to think about all this. And, and I think there's going to have to be some targeted efforts in some areas, such as the one that I used as a security example. So I think there's some, some big macro work that starts, our focus, starting to understand process, starting to work with the data, and then there's going to be components where we're going to be jumping in and doing some of the small work and identifying some objectives that come out of it.
And then all along, way that you're, that the work is going on, kind of communicating that out, so that people know that their survey responses were taken seriously, and they have that impact, the change that reinforces them and encourages them and others to take the survey in subsequent years.
Which is particularly important for the students. If you take it seriously. On the, on the parent side, I'm thrilled to see that, you know, we're scoring in the high 90s for parents feeling very included in the school community. Most of the parents that responded to the survey, was there any distribution that weighed one school or another? I know that students were mostly middle and high school students, but were the parents any, was it evenly distributed, or particularly one?
So let me give you an actual answer to that. I don't, if I don't have the answer top of mind, I either don't answer the question or I want to go to the data. And so in this case, I'm going to go to the data. I'll tell you what we typically see, is we typically see a lot more participation at the high school level, but that does not mean that's happened here.
I actually was thinking it was the opposite.
It's just because they're so much more population dense than the elementary schools, so when you look at a distribution across school, that's the impact, particularly in a multiple high school district.
It just feels like, no, the parents are, you know, you get dragged, not dragged, but you get brought into more school events in Dow's Lane and Main Street.
So what I would say is, when we look at these data here, you had the 711 responses.
Right.
You had, 29% of them came from Dow's Lane.
Okay.
16% came from Main Street, 25% came from the middle school, and 29% came from the high school.
So it wasn't even just-
Right. Fairly even, yes.
So that 95%, everybody feels very involved, which is great to hear.
Yeah.
The second thing that, and to the point of, you know, you always look for the deltas in terms of responses between one group and another to see where the gaps might be. So one of the things that popped out at me was, you know, staff members are responsive when students report bullying, and the parents almost said 45%. So that one, I have to say frightened me a little bit, but then I realized when I looked at, in the data, the don't-knows, 46% of parents said, I don't know, which is great. If you haven't had the experience of having to report bullying, you know, again, more positive views on how parents perceive the school. The one thing I will say that I want to dig a little bit more deeply into, and some point is, the teacher's response to the school is safe. So I want to know, is that the, the physical property, do they feel like, you know, things are crumbling and students are unsafe that way? Do they feel threatened by the students because, you know, we had some student incidents? Do they feel we aren't prepared enough in emergency? What are the components of that safety question and their responses? So that's, that's the one thing that, you know, 53% and the lowest of all the groups, the students felt safer than the teachers felt, so that was a concern for me.
So can we, can we hold that point for just one second, because I want to speak to that? That is a situation where, again, looking at the specific school data, is there's going to be a lot of really good information just to see if that's across the board, or if that's really focused at one school.
That would be good to know as well, yes.
And what I wanted to share with you very quickly is going to be the participation rate by school for the staff members. Because I think that would be kind of similar to your question about parents, I think that would be helpful information for you to have. So I'm going to have that up here in a second. So when we look at the participation rate by school, we had 21% from Dow's Lane, 23% from Main Street, 20% from Irvington Middle School, and 32% from the high school. So we see a lot more, a kind of disparate, a little bit of a disproportionality with the high school responses coming in on that, so.
Well, actually, given the staffing allocation, that's probably-
Which is, which is, exactly, which is, which is what you would kind of expect to see, but that's really where the value is, is looking at the data at the school level.
Again, to the point why I want to dig a little deeper, is it, is it the layout of the campus, is it the fact that you don't have clothes, the doors are left open? What, what's sort of driving this concern?
Okay. Perfect.
And I think the last thing that I wanted to just note for the record, was related to the strategic objectives as well as the capital planning. It was very clear that both parents and the community, and even the students said, you know, we want more of, you know, 21st century learning, STEM, et cetera, et cetera. But what was interesting to me, that in both the capital planning and in the strategic objectives, the students also rated highly that desire for innovation. So innovation in the classrooms and, you know, innovative learning environments was something that was compelling to them. I just thought that was interesting.
And I actually wanted to say something similar, which is in terms of the, particularly with the capital planning, that it seems to me that we would want to find a way to loop in students because they clearly have a particular point of view that we might want to consider as we do that planning. Did you want to jump in?
Student voice in public education is worth its weight in gold.
Yeah. Yeah. With the, you answer a lot of the questions that I was going to ask, that's pretty great. It seemed, I felt, based on the presentation, comfortable with all the questions we asked. I mean, clearly with some of the ones about district leadership and the board with the high number of don't-knows, you know, my takeaway is that's, you know, if we want to solve that issue, it's a communication issue in large part. But are there any questions that, that we might consider adjusting? I mean, thinking of this as a baseline, it'd be nice to say, well, let's just ask more or less a number of these questions next year. But what, how can you imagine this survey changing next year or staying the same?
So to look at the survey again, you know, I don't know that you would ask the capital projects or strategic objectives questions again. I would recommend removing the overall district- I would recommend removing the overall district improvement question, and there was another on what other things did the district prioritize question. When we think about survey design in terms of cost to the participant, the more cognitive energy they have to expend on it, the higher the cost is. And so that's why you see that real decrease, that was actually the second to last open-ended question, on that open-ended question. And so taking those out will be beneficial, particularly when what is likely to have happened is that a lot of what was said in those last two questions, because stakeholders typically connect to their school, is going to be just a repeat of what you saw in those previous questions.
Would you think we would drop the question altogether? Or is it about moving it and tying it more directly to the school? Because that's really the perspective of the different stakeholders.
So we have a similar question for school. So the first question of the survey is that, is that rating question of excellent, good, fair, and poor. If you didn't get an excellent, if you didn't give an excellent, you got a follow-up question that was an open-ended question of, how can we get a better grade from you this year? And so I think that gets at that improvement aspect of things.
I actually have, just looking through my sheets here, just have one question. On slide 29, the open-ended questions, which are parents and community members, how come you lump them together where everywhere else you kept the parents and community members separated?
So they were?
So they were kept separated based on kind of the construction of the survey itself. In this case, when we pull the verbatims in, we are looking at the sense of that everyone, they both got, within that survey, they both groups got this particular question. And so in pulling the verbatims down, we were looking at it. If you would like number this slide broken down by number of parents versus number of community members, I can certainly create that for you, that would be no problem. My conjecture would be that the vast majority of what you see here were parents.
Okay, and not a similar slide for staff members? Were they given the open-ended questions?
They were given, they were given that same open-ended question. In that case, we only had 29 responses to that question, which is really not enough to generate a theme.
Right, that's right, I remember that.
And when you gave the students the open-ended questions, and we have the four categories that you list, for, you know, what specific recommendations do they make to improve the quality of educational experience? I don't recall the survey. Is this, are these responses ones that you summarize based on the 200, 328 responses you got?
Correct.
You lumped them together?
So this is, yeah, these were, when I talked about the idea of what were the ones that had the most critical mass of, within those 320-some responses, those were the ones right there, yes.
And so for you to come, so out of 328, for you to come up with these four, are we to read into that, that 20% of the kids said one, something along these lines? Like, how do you do that, knowing how kids would respond?
So one of the most enjoyable parts of my position is reading responses from students to open-ended survey, response, questions. There was a few non-bra, all good. There was a lot of none in there for those 329. Sometimes I get a URL that leads me to a picture of a frog, not within this survey. But sometimes students use the open-ended response as a creative outlet to express themselves. And so while there were 329 responses, it does not mean that all of them had anything of substance to say.
But to come up with, to come up with one of those lines of these four, you got at least more than a handful of kids who were saying.
Yes, enough of a critical mass within that concept to say, these were the ones that were kind of repeated most times in context.
And what does a critical mass mean? Like, what does that mean?
So that's, that's the squishiness of qualitative research. And again, it is exploratory, it is not fact. So it is the concepts that emerged the most within that. And so to try to put pure numbers behind it makes it challenging because it really comes at it from a lot of different angles and through the different coding concepts is how, kind of how we come up with this. But it was the most prominent concepts that came out of those responses.
Okay, thank you.
And just to maybe build upon that point, to ask a question, but I think I know the answer to. So if you were to look at the example, students said they were concerned about building security. As a verbatim, that is not necessarily a quote for verbatim again.
Correct.
I just want to reiterate, that was a theme.
That was a theme.
You may have had X number of responses that built into you creating those words that are on the screen.
Exactly. And the other, the other piece, and two other points, is that this, this question had 100 character limit. So not a lot of room for a lot of detail about different things. Number two is, again, to reiterate the point that these are the things to explore. It's exploratory to kind of see if they are prevalent, but these are the themes that emerge because the open-ended qualitative concept is more exploratory than it is confirmatory.
And they're not ranked, correct?
Correct.
It'd be easy to laugh a little bit at the less homework, but in fact, I think a lot of districts are taking that piece quite seriously. The, in terms of the work with the administrators, how long do you spend in terms of the main work? And is there any sort of follow-up from that work with them?
So it is a three-hour workshop that we do with the administrators. They walk away with evaluation plans, and both, not only an action plan that they've come up with, but a way to kind of evaluate how they've done, how they, how they're marking progress towards their goal. And so then it becomes kind of the district's responsibility to kind of follow up to make sure that those are being implemented with fidelity, and that they're being evaluated with fidelity.
Okay, great. Any other questions, David? You've, you're good? How was the junior prom?
Start from the beginning, you're supposed to say.
Let's do it all over.
Could you just turn it over? Would there be any questions from community members? Okay. Back there, hopefully it's working. And if you could just share your name, you're familiar.
Hi, I'm, is this working? I'm Erin Bernstein, I'm the parent of a second grader at Dow's Lane. First of all, I appreciate that the survey was done, so thank you to K-12 and to the board and the district. I do have one question. Is there a thought to put in a question about the community or parents or staff members' expectations? Because I think we're a community or a district with really high expectations. So while it was, while it was great to see that 93% of the parents and community members think our school district is good and/or excellent, I think people move here with the expectation that it's excellent. So when I break down the numbers, I see only 46% think that our school district is excellent, and 53% think that it's fair or good. And if you mirror that against expectations, I don't think we're necessarily meeting the community's expectations. I might be speaking just for myself, but I moved here for excellent schools, not just good schools. And I don't know how this compares with other districts, obviously, that are taking similar surveys. But is there an idea to maybe put in expectations as it relates to this? Sorry, I know it's a tough question, and I just, I'm Debbie Downer now, but I, you know, I think we're here for excellent schools, right? That's why we pay these taxes, because we want excellent schools.
Thank you for the question. You know, obviously, we're not at the stage yet of determining that, but I don't know if you have any input about or feedback in terms of the question.
It's, sorry, is there any, you just, you made your expectations when you moved here? Or did it be, you know, is this, how is it relevant?
We can certainly look to add a question like that to the survey itself. When we actually speak to the context of the question you're bringing up, all three groups outperformed our benchmark. So when you talk about compared to other school districts, it is higher. Oftentimes, when we look at data around those that give a good, that's the idea of the best way to approach life is to constantly have a growth mindset. And so there is always room to go from great to greater, so to speak. And so some people will approach it from that perspective as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, I think it looks like we've been able to address the questions we have, and we look forward to the ongoing work. It sounds like maybe in the fall, we can look to both communicate to the community and to the, to the board in terms of some next steps? Some next steps, and I definitely appreciate what you were saying about, much like we're talking about in other areas, that we're looking for multiple, you know, factors in terms of assessing, you know, how we move forward, and so this informs it.
And I do want to, that is important. And again, it gets into that perceptible versus observable, to triangulate these data against other phenomenon, to see if there's actually a there there, so to speak.
And then actually, I didn't know quite how to ask the question, but do you have some examples about some correlations in other districts where you've done this kind of work? And what are the phenomena that come up in those conversations?
The one I can probably speak best to, as I kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, and that is around the curriculum relevance piece. Having some really deep conversations with students about how do you make curriculum relevant? Establishing the fact that what a 30-year-old teacher thinks is cool for a 16-year-old student may not be the same thing as what the 16-year-old feels. And so it's a matter of trying to connect and identify what the interests of those students are, as well as kind of personalizing and telling stories about how, you know, if I'm a biology teacher, why I became interested in becoming a biology teacher, and how biology applies to a variety of different aspects of life. And rather than maybe saying that the career that a biology, that someone who studies biology can have is a biologist, actually at the beginning of each unit, kind of having a list of separate careers that may be interesting to people, and so bringing that career exploration. And then finally, the other piece is kind of using the content that is associated with each of these content areas in real-world problem-solving scenarios. So it's much more hands-on work and being applied of the concepts, as opposed to just kind of learning them and kind of really. And I imagine that you're probably doing a fair amount of that already, but really just trying to amp that up. And the other piece is identifying that some students prefer communal project-based learning, some students prefer sitting and listening and just kind of the sit-and-get perspective. So really personalizing the learning experience for different students. Those are the things that we've seen in other districts that they've been trying to do to try to improve in this problem.
Great, I snuck a little question in at the end, I appreciate the answer. And thank you again for all the work in terms of preparing, implementing, and now providing us the results of that survey. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
And thank you, and I just want to note for public that the, not only will this video be posted and available for folks to watch again, but the actual reports that, the presentation and the reference report will also be public next week.
This one was a little shorter, so we weren't here all night, but there is a longer version that we can share. Right, well, thank you again. And for our purposes, we will, can I get a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing particular persons?
Can I correct that?
Can I get a second?
Yeah, it's not a real meeting, it's a real meeting, and it's, that's the right date, the wrong time.
I see. Yes, our next, our next meeting will be, this is incorrect on our agenda, but will be on the 19th, next Tuesday, where we'll be doing a, there'll be a presentation about project assessment and student performance. So that's, this is coming Tuesday, the 19th, at 7:30 PM. Do I need to make a motion to fix it, or?
Yeah.
Or is, does, does?
Right?
Yeah, we'll just make a fix.
So who will be here?
So now can I get a motion on the, on the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break.